Good evening and welcome to the September 23, 2020 work session of the Pennfield Town Board. I'll officially call the meeting to order. This evening in the auditorium, Councilman Andy Moore and myself from the Town Board. Additionally, we have Deputy Town Clerk Sue Scheit. We also have our Director of Planning and Town Engineer Mark Valentine and our Director of Development Services Jim Costello. On the line with us zoomed in, Councilwoman Cole, Councilwoman Dra and Councilman Ockenden. We do have a couple of other guests that we'll get to in a minute. However, I just wanted to make sure that the record is in fact up to date. So, our official statement that due to COVID-19, an executive order from the Governor, this meeting is being held via Zoom. This meeting will be taped. It'll also be broadcast live on Pennfield Cable TV 1303 on our streaming video on pennfield.org and at a later date will be transcribed. If there are any questions regarding the video services this evening, you can call in at 340-8661. And I would just like to remind everyone that this is a work session. This is for discussion with the Town Board, staff and any applicants that we do have on the line. So with that, I will go to our first order of business. We had the approval of the minutes of September 9th and those minutes are before us. And Board, I would ask for a motion of approval of those minutes.
Moved.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Dra. I'll ask, is there any discussion regarding those minutes of September 9th, 2020? Seeing none, then I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval.
Dra.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay, thank you very much. We're all up to date with our monthly reports. Thank you for the team. Next scheduled monthly reports will be discussed at our first work session in October. This evening, there are no public hearings. There are no guests. We'll move right into action items. Our first action item this evening is the Howitt Bayview LLC, request for site plan approval at 1211 Empire Boulevard and a portion of 41 Wilbur Track Road. On the line with us, I see Dr. Howitt and members of his team. At this point, I will recognize Mr. Costello for anything new that has been submitted to staff on behalf of this application.
Mr. Supervisor, I've not received anything from the public nor the applicants since the last work session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costello. So Board, we've had this matter before us. The Board has discussed this now for several work sessions. We did have a public hearing on this. We did discuss it at our last work session. In fairness to all, there was not a full complement of the Board at the meeting. I wanted to make sure that all members were in fact present. We do have all members present this evening. That being said, would entertain any comments, discussions from the Board on this matter.
Mr. Supervisor, real quick, the only question I have to Mr. Costello, and I just kind of want to make sure I'm clear on what the answer is to this question, but it's my understanding that should this project move forward for this apartment building down near Empire Boulevard, that the owner of the property and the proposed developer of the property has committed to not building the townhomes or condominiums, whatever you want to call them, going up the hill. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. And I think his intent at the time, if approval is granted, his intent would be to send a letter to the Planning Board asking that that application be withdrawn upon his request.
And for the record, I'd just like to indicate, this is an email that was received from Dr. Howitt, August 26 of 2020. Dear Mr. LaFountain pursuant to recent conversations, I and my company have abandoned the townhouse project previously brought to the town because it was determined it was uneconomical to build. We have no further plans to build it. Any further development of other parts of the property will be done within the parameters of the zoning then in place for that property. And that signed by Dr. Jack Howitt for Howitt Bayview LLC.
Okay. So with that being said, then, it would be an accurate statement, should I be talking to a resident, that there are no plans for development moving up the hill at this time?
No, as I say, he did submit that letter to Mr. LaFountain, but he will have to submit a formal letter to the Planning Board asking whether that application be formally withdrawn, which I would assume he would do, assuming he gets an approval.
All right. All right, Mr. Supervisor, I agree with everything that you've said. I know that this Board has talked about this project and vetted it out for quite some time now. You know, this particular property has had the potential for different types of development probably over the last decade or so with different owners. You know, I've said this before on different scenarios and I'll say it again and consistent with my messaging, I think this is a level of compromise that's fair. Other proposals that we've seen before this body have development or build out through the entire property going up the hill. This one, the developer and owner of the property, they're the same person, the developer and the owner of the property is Mr. Howitt, has compromised with the town to build, you know, an apartment building down in the lower part of the property away from the residential development areas and not build moving up the hill. And so I think this is a compromise moving forward where everybody gets a little bit of what they want. It maintains the unique character of that property going up the hill, you know, for residents to enjoy and for the owner to enjoy and allows the developer to maximize the lower part of the property within the current zoning that is allowed down in the LaSalle's Landing zoning district. So I will be voting in favor of this project tonight just because it's a compromise and I think that it is a little bit of what everybody wants in this property. And I think we vetted it long enough and I'm prepared to make the decision this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other discussion, Board?
Well, I wanted to say, I want to ask Jim, what exactly is the plan for the entrance ingress egress into on Wilbur Track Road? I know they're making, they're proposing to make improvements upon that.
Linda, the intent is to rebuild the entrance and also repave up to where the access point for the parking lot is. We've also, staff has also asked Dr. Howitt, he's agreed to improve the remaining portion of Wilbur Track Way to the area where he's going to be building his stormwater detention facility so that we have better access to it and it'll be a cleaner situation for those utilizing that road. In addition to that, he's also proposing to build approximately a 700 linear foot turning lane, as you can see on the map there, at the intersection of Wilbur Track Road and Empire Boulevard. That should help get people in and out safer than they are now. I still remember some of the neighbors on Wilbur Track Road being concerned about coming down Empire Boulevard and having to stop in the middle of a traffic lane to make a left-hand turn without any safety value to that at all. So this will give them the ability to be off that driving lane to make a turn into Wilbur Track Road without having to worry about somebody coming down the back end of them. So that itself is a good, is a good improvement for safety purposes on Empire Boulevard.
Thanks, Jim. And with that, those are the two main reasons that I support this application. I think Dr. Howitt's been a very stand-up developer all along. It hasn't always been that case with previous proposals. But I've never been in favor of the townhouses going up to Woodhaven. It just seemed too much, too dense, you know, with the traffic situation and so on. But with that taken off the plan, get rid of that and increase the improved accessibility entering that subdivision, which also helps the neighbors that live on Wilber Track Drive and helps the business K2 that's right there, that this is the best application I have seen in all these years we've been looking at applications on this property. And I give Dr. Howitt a lot of credit for being compromising on this, knowing that it's a tough nut to crack. And so I would, I don't know, if Andy made a second, made a motion to approve, then I would second.
I think we'll hold that. He has, he has not made a motion at this point, but we'll keep that in mind. I'll just ask the rest of the Board, is there any additional comments, questions, before we call for a vote on this matter?
Mr. Supervisor, just a couple of quick comments from my perspective. Probably not a surprise, my comments the last session still echo through today. I agree, there's some improvements in this plan that are, you know, certainly needed. Improvements on Wilber Track Road itself, the attention to the parking issue, those are all good things. The improvements to the intersection itself is a step in the right direction. I personally just don't think it's enough for that, for that intersection itself from a traffic safety standpoint. My experience over the last 34 years, you know, just makes me look at this and think, you know, there still could be a true concern for traffic going in and out of that area. So from that perspective alone, I'll, I'll be voting no this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ockenden. Any other comments or input?
Mr. Supervisor, if I may, and I first of all would like to also echo and thank Dr. How, especially for, you know, for your patience in us taking a look at this project. I know the hard work that's gone into that. We walked the site. I have been numerous times back into that site, up above, looking at it from down, down into the site, driving up and down Empire Boulevard to look at and try to get a feeling for, for this development. I agree that it's a, it is a lesser density with the 60 units. I applaud you for how moving the piece around, the building around, making it more accommodating. Nobody can say that you aren't going above and beyond for the rebuilding and the repaving the entrance to 700 feet. I do appreciate that. It's just that the very last meeting we had on that, we had, there was a major accident at the top of Empire Boulevard. We continued to, with New York State, the DOT started in the summer of 2019. They had, they reduced the Empire, the four lanes to the two with the changing lanes. I don't feel that we're reducing, by reducing lanes, we're supposed to lower the speed limit. We still have a, and become, we still have an issue on that road. I too have grave concerns about adding more density of people coming in and out on Empire Boulevard. And so for that reason, I, I can live with the vote for how, for this project, if that's how it is. I just feel the people I represent, I've talked to some people that have, do have concerns about this. And I cannot in, in, in good, good faith, vote on this project tonight. Vote yes for this project. So I will be voting no as well tonight on this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask Board, any additional comments on this matter that we haven't already heard or discussed?
Nope.
I'll ask, I'll ask Mr. Costello and Mr. Valentine, is there any input that you would like to provide to the Board that hasn't already been added to the record or you believe should be part of the record this evening?
No, sir.
All right. And then at this point, I would recognize Dr. Howitt and his team, if they have any final comments on this matter this, this evening.
Only to thank you for your hard work and consideration. I know it's been difficult.
All right, thank you, Dr. Howitt. Mr. Moore, I will circle back to you. You did not make a motion, but it sounded like you had teed it up and certainly your colleague, Mrs. Cole, had offered a second. So I might recognize you for a motion on this, on this matter.
Sure, I will move this issue to go ahead and move forward with it.
As second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Andy Moore, seconded by Linda Cole. This will be advancing this matter forward. What we would be asking staff to do would be preparing a resolution of approval that would be submitted to the Board at its October 7th legislative session, containing all of those conditions that we would have in this area. Certainly would also include modifications, improvements to Empire Boulevard to the throat of Wilber Track Road in that area. It would also address all of those matters that we discussed at the public hearing by way of the site plan that was prepared. That included parking, that included the retaining wall that Dr. Howitt had proposed, lighting that would not be intrusive, obtrusive, excuse me, to any of the neighborhooded properties and things like that. So with that, a motion on the table to approve, it's been seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote from our clerk.
Dra.
No.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
No.
Three aye, two no.
Okay, the matter is carried. Resolution will be brought forth at the October 7th meeting. Thank you all to, that have participated. All right, we will move on to Item B under our action items. Sign revision at 2118 Five Mile Line Road, Arcadia CBD. This was discussed at, two weeks ago at our work session. The Board asked to have this held for two weeks as some additional research and review could be done on the property. I'm not sure if the applicant Sebastian is with us this evening. And with, with that, I'll recognize Mr. Costello and ask Mr. Costello if there's anything new or different that has been submitted by the applicant, received by yourself on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. The Board did ask the applicant to submit some materials regarding the studies that the U of R had conducted regarding kratum. He did submit those the very next morning. They were sent off to the Town Board. And I believe Sebastian is with us this evening. I thought I saw him earlier. So the Board did review that material. I've not received anything else since that point in time. And I believe Mr. Moore was going to contact the Health Department. I think you did do that, if I'm not mistaken. Yep.
Okay, so this, this matter did receive an additional review by Board members. This is for a sign replacement at this location. Size of sign being proposed is not going to change from the existing sign. Only a name change associated with that that would be reflected on that sign. I'll open it up for discussion by the Board. Any thoughts, questions or comments?
Mr. Supervisor, I just have one question. This would be for the applicant. I'm just curious, so your original sign has Acadia listed on it and your new sign is really just talking specifically to these two products. I'd say it's maybe a little unusual. Generally, the business name would be, you know, displayed. And I'm just curious about, you know, from your business perspective, why, why you made that decision to remove your business name?
No, we didn't really find it necessary. You know, people are looking for either Seabear kratum. And when they're Googling it, they're using those keywords, not so much as Acadia, of course, which is, you know, would be more direct to our branding and something that we have to push farther. But, you know, Seabear kratum gets directly to the point really of, you know, what our business is about. And, and with the Acadia there, it does smush it a little bit. That definitely does add to it. But for the most part, I think it does look pretty clean with just Seabear kratum there. And, you know, when you do search online, it will still say Acadia. Our website has Acadia. You know, whenever anyone orders online for pickup or delivery, it's always going to be Acadia.
And I guess my second question would be for Mr. Costello. Is there anything in any of the code that, you know, requires businesses to be identified or is that really up to the, the business owner themselves?
It's at the discretion of the, of the business owner.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ockenden. Other questions or comments on this matter?
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes?
I did, you know, read, read some of the, read the information that we got about kratum. And I've done a little bit of research on that. I'm not a big fan of the, of, of just putting the CBD and the kratum out there at the corner on Five Mile Line Road like that. I guess, I know what is your building and I know it's what you're, what you're selling. I guess my, I guess I, I, I don't dislike your original sign, Acadia CBD. Even if you had Acadia CBD with the kratum on it, maybe, you know, I might tend to like to, to be more applicable to, to that. But I just, I guess maybe, and I was waiting to listen to the questions that, you know, that Bob asked about, Mr. Ockenden asked about, you know, not having your name. And I just, I'm not a big fan of it. I, I, I guess that's, my point was that I just really like, I like to know that what the business is at, where I'm purchasing or where I'm, where people are in our town, that they know exactly what the, what the business is rather than what exactly what they're advertising. I mean, I don't, I mean, maybe this is petty, but you don't usually see, you know, Witas Pizza. You just don't see Pizza or, you know, Salvatores or Pontillo's or whatever. It's the name of, it's not just, you know, I guess I, that's my point. That's my two.
On 215-441, I don't know the exact name of the plaza. It's where Monte Albons is. There's Liquor Store there. It doesn't have its name. It just says Liquor Store. You know, there's plenty of businesses that do it. It really comes down to it, we can include Acadia. On our E-frame in front of the building, it does say Acadia Seabear kratum. So people, when they walk in, they do see that. It is the first thing they see before walking in. So it's not that they're not going to be aware of where they're shopping.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the Board at this time? Okay, Board, is anyone making, interested in making a motion to either accept what is being proposed or, or not? I would entertain a motion either way on this application.
Mr. Supervisor, oh, is someone else in there? Sorry. Just to, I guess, continue on then from, from my standpoint, I'm not, I'm not crazy about, you know, about the configuration of it. I understand there may be some other businesses around that currently have it that way, but it's not really the look that I'm envisioning here in the four corners at this point. So I would make a motion to deny that request at this time.
I would second that, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to deny the current request we have before us. A motion made by Mr. Ockenden, seconded by Councilwoman Dra. I'll ask, are there any further discussions by the Board on this matter? Seeing no further discussion, there is a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote on this matter.
Dra.
Am I able to still comment before?
No, no, you're not, sir. At this, at this point, you're out of order. So there is a motion and a second on the table and I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Can you, will you read?
Absolutely. So the motion that was made was to deny the proposal that, to have Arcadia CBD removed and to just have CBD plus or cross kratum on the signage. So a motion was made to deny that as being proposed and then that was seconded. So the vote is on the table is denial of the application.
Dra.
Yay.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
So this matter, five votes to deny this application. I would ask Sebastian, if you have any questions, you can follow that up with Mr. Costello. We'll move on to Item C. Item C is review of the draft RFP for a CCA Administrator. I'll recognize Mr. Valentine as he's gearing up for that. A reminder, the Board did review this two weeks ago. We gave the Board an opportunity to take a look at the draft RFP that was put together. So tonight, Mr. Valentine will give you an update as to where we stand with that. And then one of the other discussion points, depending upon where the Board is, a timeline if they're, if you're so inclined to move forward. Mr. Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As indicated, this was shared with the Board two weeks ago. And then as recently as this afternoon, the Energy Advisory Committee reconvened in this room. We had some further discussion brought back. We had some minor tweaks and changes. Nothing, you know, holistic. It was more formatting, punctuation to kind of finalize that. And then it kind of focused back on, you know, the timeframe. So, you know, dependent upon the Board's comfort, if the Board is comfortable moving ahead, you know, we can talk about, you know, the timeline that we've kind of still kept highlighted on the screen just so that, you know, everybody can kind of see the dates and where we're trending with that. But just open it back up to the Board if you have, you know, any additional comments, if you had, you know, with your time to review it after the last meeting, you know, can provide any updates or answer any questions if you have them.
Right. And I would thank the Board for any all comments that we received from all of you on this matter. I'd also like to recognize the EEAC and specifically Sarah Kloster, who really shepherd us from a town staff standpoint through this. She's the one that has done a lot of research, accepted all the input from the committee, from staff, from the Board, and got us to a point here that the Board now looking at what our next steps might be. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments from the Board. And between Mr. Valentine and I, we'll do our best to answer any and all questions.
My only question is, Mr. Supervisor, I believe Mr. Valentine answered it the last session. Really just was concerning the timeframe. I just want to make sure that, you know, we had enough time built in so that we can get the number of proposals or anyone who's interested in submitting one. And I believe he answered that last, last session. So I have no further questions tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ockenden. Anyone else?
Mr. Supervisor, real quick, if we approve this tonight, what, what would be the next step?
Sure thing. So what, what the proposal would be is that the, the committee today made the last few modifications to the RFP. What we would look to do is we would look to put together a resolution for the next Town Board meeting on the 7th of October. And we would essentially be authorizing staff to go out for proposal on this. And then if you take a look at the RFP timeline, there's a period of time in which any one of the companies could ask questions, any question that comes in, everybody will see the same question, the same answer regardless of how many individuals, groups or companies quote us on this. We would get that addressed. It, all proposals would be due November 20th. Consistent with what the Board has asked, the EEAC would be reviewing all of those. And we would then bring all of that back to the Board with any thoughts and recommendations that the, the Board might have, the committee might have, excuse me. And then the Board could decide to either accept any one of the proposals or reject all of the proposals consistent with what we normally do anytime we go out for any type of bids or quotes.
All right. No, thank you. Thank you for answering that. I certainly plan on supporting this tonight. Would like to again thank you Would like to again thank you Supervisor LaFountain, and thank Councilman Bob Ockenden for your leadership on moving this initiative forward. As I've said in the past, this town has an incredible record of commitment to green space, to open space, to conservation, sustainability initiatives, plenty of examples of all of that that we could list, and certainly this is just another one of those examples of our commitment to providing green energy, or the option of green energy, to Penn Field residents, while at the same time maybe saving Penn Field residents some money on their energy costs. So I will support this tonight, and again, appreciate all the efforts of Councilman Bob Ockenden and your efforts Supervisor LaFountain in getting us to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion on this matter, what I would ask, is there a motion to approve this moving forward to the next step, which would be a resolution before the Town Board on Wednesday, the 7th of October?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor, and move this forward to the next step, for the next session of the Town Board Legislative Session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ockenden. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ockenden, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. Seeing no further discussion on this matter, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to informational items. The first one is Jomanda Way. That's a no-shooting petition. I will indicate that this has been on the agenda now for a number of years. Nothing has come further of that. It was held for that period of time, and at this point, there being no further interest in this, I would ask that we make a motion to remove it, and at such time down the road, if it needs to come back to the Board, we could add it as a new business or action item, information item as appropriate. So I would entertain a motion to remove this from the agenda based on no action for the past three to four years.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. Further discussion, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
That brings us to Item B, sign ordinance updates, proposed ordinance revision. Again, this matter has been on the agenda for now a number of months. This is something that Mr. Costello, along with other members of staff, a town attorney, have been gathering a number of thoughts, changes, recommendations to improve the ordinance. I'll ask Mr. Costello, I know you have shared all this information with the Board and have reviewed those updates with all of us, and I know Town Attorney Horowitz has reviewed them and believes that everything that is being proposed certainly is consistent with making sure that we have an updated code, and I would just ask if you have any additional comments or words on this particular matter.
Mr. Supervisor, it's been a long time coming. As you noted, this has been going on for quite some time. It's given us the ability to go through the document and upgrade the ordinance to what we think it needs to be, and I think the staff now is ready to submit for you a resolution for a public hearing at your convenience.
Okay. So next steps would be that, based on all of the information review that we've seen now over the last several months, that proposal would be then to bring it to our residents for a formal public hearing, to give our residents an opportunity to comment either they're in favor of, not in favor of, recommended changes, or other thoughts that they may have, and I think that's an important next step to do that. So I would look for a motion to move this, to have staff prepare a resolution for October 7th, calling for a public hearing for these recommended changes.
Move. Mr. Supervisor?
Second. Been moved by Councilwoman Draw, seconded by Councilman Andy Moore, and it looks like everybody's ready to go and get this vetted out with our residents. So seeing no further comments and no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval to move this forward for a formal resolution.
Draw.
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay. There being no further business to come before the Board this evening, the September 23rd, 2020 work session of the Town Board stands adjourned at 7:42 PM. Thank you to everyone that participated this evening. Thank you to our team downstairs that keeps us all patched together, whether it's in person, on Zoom. Thank you for all of those efforts so that we can continue to provide information to all of our residents. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Be well, be safe.
Thank you.